Evening, everyone. Let me welcome you to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, May the 20th, 2014. Again, let me welcome all of you here. I do thank you for coming. At this time, Madam Clerk, our roll call, everyone is present, all the Commissioners, the County Attorney, the County Manager, and County Finance Director. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, I'd ask you to silence all of your mobile devices for me at this time. Please check and make sure they're all turned down. We would appreciate that. Our invocation tonight is going to be done by Chaplain Ted Swan, who is retired. Ted and I go way back, and I'm glad to see him again here with us. And immediately after our invocation, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance from the Mole Elementary Student Government Association, where Lisa Dell is the principal. So if you'll stand with me, we'll have Brother Swan come up and do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful when we remember the blessings you bestowed upon our country, Burke County, and her people. And we rejoice when we feel the assurance that your strength will be our strength for every day. Lord, make us mindful of your presence. Keep us focused upon our responsibilities. Bless our Commissioners. And we thank you for those, all who serve with us. Help them. And those who serve with them to think clearly and make wise decisions. May we all, in all our human relationships, be keenly aware of our obligations to our country, our county, to each other. We pray that all of us will do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with our God in the name of the Most High. Amen.
Amen. All right, children, if you will come forward, you can come right here in front of the podium and face the flag if you'd like to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving down our agenda, the next item is approval of the meeting minutes for March the 24th, April the 1st, a pre-agenda, April 1st, a recessed session, and April 7th, a special session. Gentlemen, you've had copy of these minutes to read. If there's no additions or corrections, I will accept a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Y'all have heard the motion from Wayne. All in favor, please raise your right hands. That'd be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Next item is our approval of the agenda as amended. We have the addition of decision item number three, also as a supplemental information, a consent item from the tax collection agreement for Connolly Springs. Am I correct on that one? And a supplemental information, the decision item number one, for the preliminary budget report from the County Manager. I will accept a motion at this time for the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Everybody's heard the motion from Maynard. All in favor, please raise your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. We have no presentations tonight, but we do have a scheduled public hearing, which is the Community Development Department Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2014-01, and public hearing. Our presenter, starting with, will be Scott Carpenter, our Planning Director. Everyone, please, I'd like to remind you, when you come forward to the microphone, if you will try to eat it if you can, so Kay can get this copied on her machine, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here for this zoning map amendment, 2014-01. As you're aware, this process has been a long one. It's been going on for about over six months, and it's required a lot of meetings, a lot of dedicated people have worked long and hard. I'd like to recognize Crescent, James Martin, and Crawford Craig, as well as our environmental folks, George and Susie, and Georgia's wife. And there's also a bunch of homeowners from 1780 who have been a part of this as well. So what I hope we've done is I hope that we've turned a page in the way that business is conducted at the lake when it comes to development, in that there'll be a lot of meetings, and a lot of people will give and take and come to a consensus on what is best for Lake James. And I really think that that's what's occurred through this process. I'll keep my comments brief, three to five minutes, so that Crescent can give you more details of what they are proposing. As you know, in 2004, there were several conditional zonings done, and those rezonings added up to over 6,659 acres of land. Tonight's proposed rezonings are a fraction of that, but they do include parts of that land. 1780 is not just the county line that a lot of people refer to, it's actually accumulation of multiple properties into a community. And in tonight's request, seven of the parcels were former county line parcels, and the other seven are other parcels that were not part of the rezonings from 2004. Eight of the proposed zoning tracks tonight will be CDL/CD, which is Conditional District Low Density, and six of them will be Conservation District Estate, Conditional District. And the proposal request is basically to rezone certain parcels of land and propose new development criteria and conditions from the original plans. Crescent Communities believes that these changes will provide them with more types of housing to offer while still remaining in compliance with the intent of the parallel conditional district concept. The request will reallocate other parcel acreage to meet common open space requirements, and it will continue to provide protection of the natural environment. These new land offerings and development designs are more in line with the current housing demand. I believe you gentlemen have the map of the proposed amendments tonight, and essentially there's two types of rezoning that's being asked for. So part of it will rezone certain parcels to Conservation District Estate, and the other will rezone the other parcels to Conservation District Low Density. If you refer to your map, parcels nine through 12, which are tan colored, will be rezoned from Conservation District Low Density to Conservation District Estate lots. Parcels 13 and 14 will remain as Conservation District Estate lots, and all these lots together, nine through 14, will be turned into community open space. So it's important to realize that of the Conservation District Estate portion of 1780, that over half of that, 51%, will be an open space that's dedicated to the homeowners' association. The reason that these tan parcels are being rezoned to Conservation District Estate is so that it meets the underlying zoning criteria of one dwelling unit to five acres. The other part of this request is to rezone the other lots to Conservation District Low Density, which is one dwelling unit to 3.5 acres. So the parcels you see that are colored in green on your map make up that request, and that is a total of 405 acres, which equals 112 dwelling units. Originally, when 1780 was designed and the principles of how it would operate were laid out, it was all based on 218 dwelling units. They've built 106 dwelling units to date, and so this other 112 actually comes back to the 218 that they thought that they had. There's been three things that are sort of major points that have changed, and one of those was a county line shift. So after the 2004 zoning was approved by Burke County, the precise location of the McDowell-Burke County line was then agreed upon by the two counties, and this caused the line to shift further into Burke County, which resulted in a reduction of county line acreage in Burke County, which translates into a loss of housing units. So there is actually no more units being requested today than they originally thought that they had. One of the other changes is the interior lot size for cluster lot classification, the current zoning limits development of interior lots to one acre or larger. So they believe that a variation of smaller lots, in addition to the current sized lots, will add a new product for other possible homeowners and buyers. The other change that we thought was significant was waterfront lot size, and they are requesting to reduce the minimum waterfront lot size from two acres to one and a half acres. That may or may not add more dwelling units to the lakefront. If it does, it won't be significant because the amount of land there is limited. A few of the other factors that apply that I think are important because of the environmental concerns that were expressed throughout the process are some of the following: that the 125-foot buffers on the lakeshore will remain, the 50-foot buffers on creeks, there will be a 10% maximum impervious surface area, there will also be extensive vegetation protection, 25% of the project area will be set aside for permanent open space recreation, which is significant in a low density, and remember, it's 50% on the Conservation District Estates, the way that it will come out. Buildings and piers will conform to design standards created to preserve the rustic character and viewshed of the area. Sensitive environmental features of the property will be given special consideration as a specific site plan is developed. The historic features of the property will be preserved, including cemeteries and the original Overmountain Victory Trail. Building envelopes will be specified on final plats and will not be located on property having slopes in excess of 25%. Flood planes, buffer areas, utility easements, flood easements, or wetlands. So in conclusion, the proposed Lake James Low Density and Estate Lot Conservation Parallel Conditional District rezoning and the accompanying development plan ordinance are what I would believe to be minimal in their impact. They pertain mainly to the undeveloped portions of the county line parcel and a few small outlying parcels. The main aspects of these requests pertain to reduction of lot size, setbacks, lot widths, and the addition of cluster home development. The commercial development proposed under this rezoning was already approved under the original 2004 rezoning and plan, and I believe I described where that has been relocated to. It was at a different location that turned out to be developed for a single-family residential. So the rezoning will increase the overall residential density from one dwelling unit per five acres to one dwelling unit to three and a half acres on the newly rezoned parcels. Staff's opinion is that this change will not have an impact on the overall plan or the environment or the viewshed on Lake James. So staff does recommend approval of the rezoning and the conditions associated with it through the accompanying development plan. Planning Board met on March 27, 2014, and voted four to one to recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider approving zoning map amendment 2014-01. And as part of this vote, you gentlemen, if you vote to approve through a motion, you'll need to also adopt consistency with the comprehensive plan through a zoning consistency statement. And to save you all from having to read it, I will read it at this time, if you so choose.
You may.
I will read it. The proposed zoning map amendment with its added conditions is consistent with the Burke County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Lake James Phase II Plan, and the Burke County Zoning Ordinance, and is reasonable and in the public interest because, one, the zoning request would allow for expansion of an existing residential subdivision in order to provide both quality and environmentally conscious development around Lake James. Two, the zoning request incorporated community meetings and the general public and with existing private property owners within the existing subdivision that resulted in mutually agreed upon terms for the approval of the subdivision's future development. Three, the zoning request includes the addition of permanent common open space, which will permanently set aside land for both preservation and private-public recreational uses. Four, the zoning request includes substantial buffering to separate cluster developments from single-family home lots. And five, the proposed uses of the subject properties are compatible with the approved uses by right and conditional use permitted with the Low Density Conservation District. And after the public hearing, I'll be glad to entertain questions.
Okay, Scott, at this time, will you introduce the people from Crescent?
And James Martin with the Crescent Communities will be presenting on behalf of the applicant to the board.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Scott. You did such a great job. I think I will not do my 30-minute presentation.
Thank you, sir.
That was wonderful. There's a few slides that we would like to go over. We will not go over the entire book that I placed in front of you because there's no need to reiterate everything. You know, Scott mentioned it, but we spent a lot of time working with a lot of good folks, folks who live in our community, 1780, folks who are concerned and live around the lake area, the Conservation Coalition, Burke County Planning Staff's been wonderful to work with. And we've heard concerns, we've adjusted what we've been asking for, and I think we've come to a resolution that all groups and all sides feel good about and feel positive about moving forward. If you can follow along, you know, we want to rezone this to offer up more flexibility to adjust to a changing market. The market has changed, it may change again in the future. We're looking for flexibility in this rezoning. Our experience, you know, just want to talk about the local team. Keith Glenn's the Senior Vice President, and he is based in Charlotte, been with Crescent for 15 years. I'm James Martin, worked with Crescent for over 12 years. We have Crawford Craig, who's a development manager, he's been with Crescent for over six years, and Troy Lucas, many of you remember him, he's still with Crescent for 13 years, and he's in charge of our planning, corporate planning for residential. These next few slides, those of you who remember, is it not moving? There we go. On Slide 9, page 9, this goes over all the tracks that were rezoned in part of the 2004 agreement, the 2004 entitlement process that we went through. The Lindbleugh Track, which is on the northern end of the map, 1,250 acres, the Longarm Track, which many folks know now as a park, that was divided up into five parcels, Longarm 1 through 5, the County Line Track on the southwestern portion of the map, 1,090 acres, and the East Lake Tracks, East Lakes 1 through 6. Page 10, you'll see the underlying zoning that went along with that rezoning in 2004 as a combination of Conservation Parallel Conditional Zoning Districts, a CD. So you had the Low Density Conservation District, CDL. You also had the Estate Lot Conservation District, CDE. And you also had in the East Lake Parcels, the Planned Residential Mixed Use Parallel Conditional District, it's a mouthful, PRMU. Since 2004, a lot has changed with these parcels. The areas outlined in red on Slide 11 show the areas that have been sold off or donated since that time. It's Lindbleugh Track was sold to North Carolina. The Longarm Parcels, Longarm 1, 2, 3, and 5 were sold to the state for the state park. And then East Lake 1, 140 acres, that was donated to Burke County here late last year. So along with that, it was 44,560 acres, and then a total of potential dwelling units that were, they had dwelling units and lots assigned to all that acreage. That was a loss of 1,069 dwelling units that were allowed in 2004, and they're now removed, they're in conservation or within a state park. What's left is Longarm 4. What's left is East Lake 2, 3, 5, and 6, and the County Line, which now is 967 acres in Burke County. The County Line did shift since 2004, took away some land in Burke County, gave some land to McDowell County. We'll flip through our projects since that time. And again, we're looking at Slide 19. This is the area that we are rezoning here, the current zoning. On the next few slides, Scott did such a great job on Slide 23 and Slide 24, the areas that we're rezoning, some from CDL to CDE, some from CDE to CDL, it's a bit confusing. That takes, this map does a good job of explaining that. Slide 25, the major reasons of our rezoning, the county line shift allowed us to, required, resulted in the loss of some lots in Burke County we thought we had. It was originally contemplated, we could get 218 lots on what we thought was 1,090 acres. With the reduced acreage, we wanted to gain that back. There's 106 current dwelling units today, and we want the allowance to rezone to gain us back up to 112 more. 106 plus 112 gets you back to the 218 that was contemplated in 2004. Interior lot size and cluster lot classification, that's another change, that reduced our minimum interior lot size from one acre down to a cluster lot, and we have constraints that we've established and worked through with groups on those cluster lots that limit the number, then limit the number in a row, that establishes the separation between a cluster lot and a noncluster lot, from one cluster subdivision to another cluster subdivision. And then we also are asking for a waterfront lot size reduction from two acres to 1.5 We included some relevant pages in the rezoning application. You probably have the whole booklet there in front of you that staff prepared, but we pulled out some points in here. I don't know, I think, you know, if you have questions about it, we can go through that. I want to point out one thing, in Slide 29, it's a slight difference from what the Planning Board approved, but it actually put a little bit more constraints on us, the applicant. We agreed, through working with the Conservation Coalition, that we would use the, in the second paragraph down, low-impact development impervious cover per lot, that we agreed that we would be guided, be guided by the design principles and guidelines set out in the publication entitled Low-Impact Development: A Guidebook for North Carolina, published in 2009 by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension. You know, if you read through that guidebook, it's a guiding principle of how you would design, how you would develop, how you would plan future phases, and we didn't see a reason why that couldn't be in here as a guiding force. We've used those practices, why not carry it forward? You can still use those practices if you're going to a cluster subdivision. If you are including some smaller waterfront sizes from two to one and a half acres, there's nothing that prevents that. Previously, we asked for a 10% impervious for the area. We further constrained ourselves down to say that we could have, on any waterfront lot, the max per lot is 10%. However, we can go up to 12% impervious, as long as a design is established for a particular lot, so that the effective impervious is dropped down to 10. So the impervious could be 12, but when you add features like rain barrels, or cisterns, or different type devices that a civil engineer would design, that would be required, a civil engineer, the effect of the calculation can be made and shown to staff that the effective impervious is 10. If you took away those measures, it may be up to 12. But if you can go up to 12, those measures have to drop you back down to 10. Same thing with the, on the cluster subdivision, the max impervious shall be 12. You can go over 12, but again, in that cluster subdivision as a whole, the effective impervious must be dropped back down to 12 through civil design and implementations and through the design that would be approved by staff. We also, through the next few pages, you can see some of the constraints. Slide 32, you can see some of the constraints that we placed on our cluster lot development standards, and this defines how many cluster lots can be in a cluster subdivision, and it's up to six in a cluster subdivision. They must be accessed off of a private drive. The groups that we work with did not want the cluster lots right up on the main entry roads, right up on new roads, they had to be off of a private drive, to be tucked away a little bit. So you could have the cluster subdivision, a series of homes with a minimum lot size of 85 foot wide, but you could only have six, you know, on that private drive. You may have three, but you can go up to six. The density in a cluster subdivision must be one dwelling unit per acre. So if you had six units on that private drive in that clustered area, you'd have to have a minimum of six acres. All in, all that density would still flow and be constrained by the overall density in the underlying zoning that we're asking for. It goes over and explains separation between one cluster subdivision and another. It explains buffers between cluster subdivision and current lots that are plotted, current roads that are established. The separation from the lake, no cluster lot shall be within 300 feet of the lake. There are architectural restrictions on Slide 34 for these cluster homes, which establishes a maximum height, establishes a maximum square footage and a maximum square footage and height on accessory structures as well. And that was to address concerns of the viewshed impact that having a lot of large homes on small lots really close to the lake. We wanted to push it from the lake, we wanted to constrain the height of them, we wanted to limit the size of accessory structures and square footage. I think I'll leave it there. If we have questions, or if, and we'll be available later for questions if that's needed. But again, I want to say thank you to the staff, Scott Carpenter and the staff, and great to work with. Thank you to the Conservation Coalition, which is made up of a number of folks, and you know, I think we work together real well, and I think we've come to a good end result by working together in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, James. If you will just remain up there, we'll need you back, not there, but we'll need you back in a few minutes. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing for ZMA 2014-01. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up, please?
Mr. Chairman, we have three speakers signed up.
Okay. And who would be first?
I would call Mr. George Johnson, and he has also provided a handout.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is George Johnson. I'm president of Lake James Environmental Association, a member of the coalition, and speaking for the coalition in this particular regard. I'd like to say that the decision to support this rezoning request involved nine months of constructive discussions and negotiations among Crescent Community, 1780, property owners, five conservation environmental organizations, and members of the Burke County Planning and Development Department. And what you just heard from James is absolutely what happened. There was a lot of really constructive interchange here. All of these same people sought to protect the lake and have a continued successful development in 1780. Those were the objectives we were focused on. Crescent's willingness to drop proposals that could not be supported and make modifications to address other concerns brought us to the point where, this evening, the Conservation Coalition fully supports rezoning of 1780 Low Density Track as presented in the Development Standards Document dated May 7, 2014. We express our appreciation to all who worked together to achieve this positive outcome. It was a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Suzanne Johnson?
I too want to just say thank you very much. We've really had a very good experience working with all the people that have been involved with this. And I have just two questions about, I'm just a little confused about the process. When, when do you all vote on approval or disapproval of this? Does that happen this evening or in the private session?
That happens this evening.
This evening, okay. And, okay, that was basically it, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Susie Hammrich-Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and County Manager, and all of the County Commissioners, also to James, and Crawford, and their team, and to the landowners who I don't see necessarily here tonight that worked very diligently, most of them in the 1780 subdivision, to work with Crescent as well. with Crescent as well. I just wanted, I'm the Executive Director of Foothills Conservancy. We were one of the conservation groups that were very deeply involved alongside the county as a partner to the county back in 2002, '03, '04, leading to the '04 Conservation District zoning. And at that time, it was a very long and, and yet very informative process, at the end of which, I think Crescent, the county, and multiple conservation groups, citizens across not just Burke County, but people from many places that love Lake James, worked hard to come up with a solution at the lake that would allow development to occur that could be profitable, that would attract new tax-paying property owners to the county. And out of that came 1780, Dry Creek, the developments that Crescent has done also in McDowell County, that I think have proven to be resilient for Crescent during a very difficult economic period. And I think that's been proven to be a great tax base for the county as well. So I want to remind people, Maynard was in on that back at that point in time, and also Wayne Abley, and there were others in your chairs that did what you're doing tonight, which is to pay very, very close attention to how an asset that sets Burke County apart in western North Carolina, where there's great beauty, but there's nothing like Lake James and the Limble Gorge wilderness that rises above it. So it was nine, eight or nine months well-spent by conservation groups that George didn't mention all of them, but let me mention the names of the groups that worked together that we ended up just calling the Coalition. The Catawba River Foundation, which is very concerned, obviously, with water quality in the lakes and the rivers. Our group, Foothills Conservancy, a land trust for eight counties, but we're based in Morganton. It's our home county. Lake James Environmental Association, which George leads now. Back when, in '04, there were others in that position, but that group's been very strong for a long time, was founded to protect the waters of the lake, and continues to pay attention. There's a South Mountains Chapter of the Sierra Club here, that's been a longtime group in Burke County, that's been behind many things and pulled together with this coalition. And also the Table Rock Chapter of Trout Unlimited. That's the Conservation Coalition Groups. So tonight, Foothills Conservancy, and also Foothills Conservancy as a member of this Coalition, supports the negotiated changes that have been presented with tonight. And we applaud Crescent for being willing and open to working and listening and making adjustments that we think protect the lakes, scenic views, and waters for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to ZMA 2014-01? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing. And gentlemen, I offer it to you for a discussion and questions to anybody from Crescent or the county planner. Scott, if you want to come back, James, if you want to come back, just in case the Commissioners have questions or comments.
Johnny, I was going to call on our Duke Power representative here today. He and I met, and he did such a good job explaining, and I don't know if you can relive that event or not, and, but we do have to be smart enough to not preserve what we have, but also to notice the difference in marketing trends, and how we continue to market ourself as a county and as a Lake James and as an entity. Could you do that again, or do you remember it? But basically, it dealt with the change in demands even for Lake, Lake James. Customers were changing, and in order to accommodate those customers and continue to grow Lake James, which obviously continues to grow Burke County, y'all needed to make these changes for that, for those reasons. And you did that so eloquently.
I'll try. You put me on the spot. So, we have seen over the past few years, and we all know what happened in 2008, 2009, you know, with the Great Recession, you know, coming out of that, Lake James primarily in our communities is a second-home community. We do have some primary folks who have their primary home there, but a lot of people have their second home there. And so, you know, that market has, has shrunk. And, and what we tried to do with this process is to be able to offer options. There are, there are different buyers that come through our door. Some fall in love with the acre-plus interior, or the two-acre-plus, or even four-acre-plus waterfront. Some don't require that much, don't want that much, they don't want to have to maintain that much. So this gives us the ability to offer up different products, if the market's there, and react to those changes in the market, to react to those different buyers. By doing this, we've taken our market that may be arguably this large, and we've opened it up a little more. And every help, we need all the help we can get to expand that market. But it's important that while you want these options, you got to have it in balance with what we've already created, and with the stake that we've already placed in the ground there, and the soft impact that we've already had on this development, and the community that we've created thus far. So it's, you got to balance the two. Yes, you need options, but you also need to do that in balance with, with what you've already created, and what we've already developed, and what people have already bought into. And I believe that this accomplishes that. It's, it's a good balance.
We've set, if I may, again, Ms. Chairman, we've set quite a few records with Mrs. Jones and other conservative groups. She and I were in Raleigh and received awards. I got a personal award and received awards on behalf of Burke County. And I would like to say, too, that it is, it is healthy and nice to have people like Crescent, Duke Power, the conservative groups, and the owners get together and come up with something that is likable by most, 99% of the people. So I too would like to thank you for that attitude and that support.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll be open to the entertaining motion, a dual motion.
Mr. Chairman, do you want those both motions together, or?
If you'll read the first motion and just include...
The second, the second motion, I think Scott already went through that, so we'll just, the first motion will be to adopt an ordinance amending the Burke County zoning map as it relates to ZMA 2014-01. And then the second motion is to adopt the filing zoning statement of consistency. Scott already more or less read that motion, so I don't think we'll have to go through it again.
I don't think we will. You've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Before you two gentlemen leave, on behalf of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, let me say, and I want to applaud the Johnsons and the folks up at 1780. I have never seen a group of people work as hard as you people have worked over the last nine months. And it is so refreshing to see people be able to sit down and work out a plan that will move Burke County forward for many, many, many years. County Manager, on behalf of the board, for the zeal and the gusto of Scott Carpenter, our county planner, I would hope that something would be placed in his file to, that's the best I can do for Scott, for all the work, work that you've done over nine months. There's nothing else available, maybe a Coke in the back or something, I'll get you later on. But it's just amazing what you have done, and, and how you've pulled groups of people together. And we are so proud of you for doing that. And, audience, if you will join me in a round of applause for this group. We passed it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number eight on the agenda will be informal public comments. Has anyone signed up?
I do not have any cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to number nine is our consent agenda for the night, presented by Brian Stein, our County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have 15 items on your consent agenda. First, clerk appointment to Partners BHM Board of Directors, Consumer Family Advisory Committee. Second, clerk acceptance of CDBG progress report submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government. Number three, cooperative extension, North Carolina Cooperative Extension Centennial Proclamation. Are you wanting to say anything about that, since you're here?
Thank you. I'm a little hoarse, so I won't say too much. You do have a proclamation. Our official day for our centennial was on May 8, and so we went to Washington DC. We had a group that went there for our national centennial. And then today, we actually come back from Raleigh. Governor Pat McCrory designated today Cooperative Extension Day in North Carolina. So thank you again for this proclamation, and he signed one as well today.
Now, does that mean you're going to feed us, like the horn?
We are later on in the year. You do have your centennial pen, but you will get an invitation to our centennial celebration for the county, and all citizens will be invited as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number four, County Manager, authorization for County Manager to waive fees for certain government-related events scheduled at the Foothills Higher Education Conference Center. Item five, General Services Award of Janitorial Services Contract for Fiscal 2014-15. Item six, JCPC, approval of a final revision to the JCPC 13-14 funding allocation. Item seven, JCPC, approval of the JCPC 14-15 annual funding allocation and the JCPC 2014-2015 county plan. Item eight, Sheriff, request for position reclassification. Item nine, Sheriff, acceptance of monetary donation in memory of fallen officer Jason Crisp and K-9 Morris. Item 10, Sheriff, acceptance of a 2009 Ford van donated by the Burke-Catawba District Confinement Facility. Item 11, Tax Office, agreement of collection taxes for the town of Conley Springs. Item 12, Tax Office, tax collection report for April 2014. Item 13, Tax Office EMS collections report for March 2014. Item 14, Tax Office Refund Release and VTS Report for March 2014. And item 15, Tax Office, Approval of Change Order Number One for Arrogate Systems Incorporated for $19,500. This concludes your consent agenda, sir.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Board, you've heard the 15 items on the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, permission to make one comment about Donna Saltstrom?
Yes, sir.
I did invite her to the launch meeting. I was, I told her I'd be delighted to introduce her.
Go ahead, sir.
But she is not here. She could not make it. But I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda items.
All right, you've all heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor, raise your right hand. Madam Clerk, count will be five to zero. Moving on to item number 10 is our items for decision. Our first item by the County Manager is presentation of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal years 14 and 15, and scheduling of the public hearings.
Let me just get to that.
All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have submitted to you a balanced budget for fiscal It retains the current tax rate of 68 cents as in this current year. Back in February, you remember, we had a preliminary budget workshop, was conducted to receive budget requests from all department heads and other entities. Those requests totaled $79,838,506. Finance Officer and myself have gone through the process of review and made recommendations that you have in the budget that's presented to you. The most significant change that you will see at this point is about a million-some dollars, and that has to do with the appropriation of funds for architectural services related to the construction of a new county jail, and the construction of EMS Station Number Seven here in the western side of Morganton. We received a request from the school system, and unfortunately, the way the budget calendar schedule was for us to produce the documents that you have before you tonight, and the time it took to get some information back from the school system related to their request for an additional $2.1 million, we were not able to complete our review prior to having to print this and present it to you. So those are things that can be looked at during our budget workshops. So at this point in time, the number that we have placed in the budget is that that was placed in for the current budget year. Again, we're trying to use money as wisely as possible to employ technology, when we see that it would be of a substantial benefit that we believe would benefit our citizens. And we are also looking to do improvements, infrastructure improvements, that are needed for Burke County buildings and other areas that are used to serve the needs of Burke County and its citizens. Again, I present to you a balanced budget for your consideration, and the information is there, I believe, in the motion for you to schedule a public hearing on this matter.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments for the County Manager at this time?
I think, Johnny, since we just received that, we probably maybe do have questions, but I don't think they're appropriate tonight, because we'll have quite a few meetings on this. But I do make the motion for the scheduling of the public hearing for the, for our constituents in Burke County. Motion to acknowledge receipt of the manager recommended budget for FY 14, 16, 15, I'm sorry. Motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, June 17, 2014, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as persons may be heard.
All right, you've heard the three sections of Wayne's motion about the County Manager's budget report. Are there any other questions, discussions? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hands. Madam Clerk, that'd be five to zero. Thank you, Mr. County Manager. And just for the audience's sake, the public, the budget meetings will, our budget sessions will be posted for people to see when it comes out on our website. Is that correct, ma'am? Okay, good. All right, item number two on items for decision, the County Manager again is a request for qualifications for architectural services related to the construction of a county jail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, as directed by the board in late March, an RFQ for Architectural Engineering Jail Design Services for the construction of a new jail was issued on April 10, 2014. The notice was published in the Charlotte Observer, excuse me, and posted to the county's website. The RFQ submittals were due on April 28, 2014. We received four submittals. I'll go through this in alphabetical order. ADW Architects and Where Bonzel Architects, Hemphill-Randall Associates Architects, Little Diversified Architectural Consulting, and Mosley Architects. I reviewed the submittals and compared them to what was requested in RFQ for information that was required, and looked carefully at the projects that had been done by each of these, these respondents, and how they were proposing to do the project if they were picked to do the project here in Burke County. As a result of the review and consultation with the finance officer, Deputy County Manager, it is my recommendation that the board authorize me to move forward with contract negotiations with Hemphill-Randall Associates Architects. They are the firm that also did the jail in Ash County that I think we viewed and were pleased with how that was done. They are doing a jail in Wilkes County at this time, and have done other similar facilities of the size that we're talking about here in the state of North Carolina within the past four to five years. Again, it's my recommendation that the county move forward with Hemphill-Randall Associates Architects.
All right, you've heard the report from the County Manager. Any questions or comments at this time?
What was that amount again? You, you said it earlier. How much will we spend for this?
There's not an amount. It was, we requested qualifications from them. I'm asking for authority to negotiate the actual contract for those services.
Any idea how much, about what, dollar amount?
That, you're not allowed to discuss that when you do an RFQ with the respondents.
Okay.
But if it's, if we can't successfully negotiate, I would ask to be authorized to go to the second firm, which I would choose Mosley Architects is the second, if, if I'm unsuccessful with Hemphill-Randall.
So we have, we have no idea how much, what kind of impact it's going to have on our budget next year?
Not until I get their response. I mean, it's...
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize County Manager to negotiate an executive contract with the recommended firm for Architectural Engineering Jail Design Services.
All right, you've heard the motion from Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to item number three from the county manager is removal and appointment to the Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've had this at an earlier time, and I was asked to look into this and provide you some information. I've done that regarding the Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, and the removal of one existing member, and the replacement of that member by Gary, not Gary Craig O., I'm sorry.
Susan Craig O.
Gary Carswell. Apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No problem, sir.
If there's any questions, I can try to answer. But again, I followed up on the questions that the board presented to me a few weeks ago, and we have the matter back before us.
Okay, any questions for the county manager or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I understand that Mr. Carswell has children, they play in a different league, he coaches in a different league. We did get a couple of questions answered about the candidate now that's serving. But surely, I do not have a copy of their bylaws. Would love to read them. I would love a couple of other questions answered, like if she's coaching a team, why is she not a member? And then if you're not coaching a team, and you're coaching a team in some other league, why would you be the candidate for this position?
I guess my feelings are the same, Mr. Chairman. I don't agree with this decision at all. And I would, I would think that maybe that they would, the Chargers would, or somebody would speak to her to see if she wants... I don't know if she's been asked to join the Chargers or whatever, but I don't like the way this is being handled personally. And I, I could never vote for this.
Mr. Manager, can you speak to either of those questions from Wayne or Maynard?
In talking with Mr. Cook, Ms. Kaminski has not attended any of their meetings. They're, as far as I know, their meetings are open, and they are set, I don't remember if it was the third Sunday afternoon, but they're, they're set, and it's, you know, if she wants to attend, she could.
When we say the meetings, are we talking about recreation board meetings, or are we talking about Chargers meetings?
The Drexel Charger...
Has she ever been invited to those meetings? This would be my question. She apparently is attending recreation board meetings, which to me is the most important thing. But she might never have been invited, and probably hasn't been invited to come to the, is it the Chargers meeting? I think we still need to do, we need to, I don't think anybody's talked to Susan about this. I'm not, Maynard says she attends recreation board meetings, which is, to me, the most important thing. I don't know. And I think when you sit on the board, sit on the recreation board, you not only represent your area, but you represent all of Burke County. I've never been to a recreation board meeting really where somebody's really pushed, pushed their, either Salem or whatever. It's sort of united that they're working for the best of Burke County recreation.
Mr. Chairman, I would just simply comment that that recreation board is made up of representatives from each of the groups, and this lady is not a member of the group. They have brought forth their recommended representative, and I would like to proceed with this.
Mr. Chairman, my comments are simple as this. The documents presented in this request should have been subtle as to date of these requests back when, months ago, though we discussed this last year. And it appears to me this, the question was answered back then that Gary Carswell would be the representative of Drexel. So I don't know where the issues are. So my motion would be to appoint Gary Carswell as the representative of Drexel District to the Burke County Recreation Commission.
Would the second part of your motion be to remove Susan Kaminski?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay, you've heard the motion from Jack to appoint Gary Carswell as representative of Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, and to remove Susan Kaminski. All in favor of Jack's motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed, that'd be three to two, Madam Clerk. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that moves us on to the decision items, and we'll move forward to our reports and comments from the board. They usually start on the right. Let's start on the left this time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any comments at this time.
My comment, Mr. Chairman, to the manager, is a copy of this budget available for the public?
Yes, sir.
To look at, and where it'd be in towns?
It's online, and it's in the county manager's office there on the table as you come in, available during...
Could we, you know, I know you've put in a news herald?
Oh, I'm pretty sure that's going to happen.
I mean, not, not paid news ad, but they have a section there that you can advertise about meetings and things that are available for citizens like this. I'd just like to make that, you know, ask that that be done, so people will have an opportunity to go online. Because I got questions last year, after the budget was passed, how do you find the budget? Where do we find the budget? And we need to make this public, all the information we can to the public on this budget before June comes.
Certainly.
Board members, Mr. Chairman, there was an advertisement already in the paper giving notice that the budget would be submitted to the board today, and also announced our schedule of budget meetings, upcoming budget meetings, and their time and their locations. And the budget will also be sent to the library, so folks can go there as well.
Okay, great. Anything else, Jack?
No, that's it, thanks.
All right, Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to further commend all these folks that we spoke to earlier, how well that they worked to resolve our Lake James issue. I appreciate that as well.
Maynard?
No comment.
Wayne?
Like Jeff and Maynard on Lake James, that was wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Want to go ahead and acknowledge that we've had three members successfully complete the UNCCH School of Government, Community Development Academy, that being our chairman, Mr. Carswell, our clerk to the board, Kay Honeycutt Drone, and planning director Scott Carpenter. I understand that they actually had to take somewhere between three- and four-hour tests in order to successfully complete that program.
Amen, Mr. County Manager. It took me three and a half hours.
And so they are to be commended, a job well done. I think this will help us and move forward, especially the parts about economic development, and be made aware of how the state has restructured some things from how they were in the past. Also, I've received notice that the 40th anniversary of National EMS Week is May 18 through the 24th, and the 30th anniversary of EMS for Children Day is May 21st tomorrow. So I wanted to mention that. And Scott, if you can help me with the photograph, I took that this afternoon before coming to our meeting. I don't know if you can blow that up any, any more than it is, but they are putting the sod down. You can see above the windows there on the right-hand corner, that is the wording on the side of the building, Burke County Emergency Communications Center. And we're moving along with that. And I think you may have heard in the news that things are progressing so that 911 can receive text messages, and when that occurs, we are ready to do that. The facility is now, the building structure is almost absolutely finished, but there are some things with AT&amp;T and the, the hooking up of things within the system, and also connecting there. Somewhere in Newton at the State Highway Patrol Facility is going to probably slow us down a little bit because of some scheduling. And the state is doing a rebanding, the P-25 rebanding, and that's got the state's communications people kind of tied up in a knot for the month of June, and is going to prevent probably AT&amp;T being able to do some of the work they need to do until possibly the early part of July. But we are looking to have a ribbon cutting on the 20th of June at approximately 3:30 p.m. And we've sent notice out to folks to hold that date. Hope that each of you can be there. That is a Friday afternoon, so if you need to get off about 3 o'clock from work to get there at 3:30, we're trying to accommodate everybody's schedule. And I believe our state representatives should be home by that time on a Friday afternoon. So I'm excited. You don't know how excited I am to see this, this project wrapping up, but I will certainly be happy. And I think our 911 director, Ms. Trzynski, is chomping at the bits. So thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yes, sir. County Attorney?
No further comments.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the only thing I would remind you, that the General Assembly Short Session is going strong in the first week. I have sent you a number of issues that would be relative to counties. Some of those things, one or two I want to mention is the fact that maybe all misdemeanants will now be housed in county jails instead of state prisons, which would put a grievous burden on all the counties in this state. We need to pay close attention to those bills. A tax bill that is associated with a fracking bill somehow moved in there that would affect counties, and I encourage you to keep up with that bill. So while the short session's in, please make your phone calls to Senator Daniel, Representative Blackwell, and Representative Hager, and let's stay abreast of these issues. And as the County Commissioners Association puts out their bulletins, please, please make sure that you can read those. We do need, we have a, okay, let's go back to our vacancy announcements first from Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, we have vacancies on the following boards and committees. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Burke County Planning Board, Library Board of Trustees, Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees, the Voluntary Agricultural District Board, and the Industrial Revenue Bond Board.
Thank you, Kay. Let me make a personal plea to everybody that's watching tonight on TV and those that are here. Please, please take advantage of all of these boards and commissions that we have, and if you can find it in your time schedules, please volunteer for one of these boards. We truly need people on these. We do have a need for closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss threatened or pending litigation, discuss economic development matters, and discuss a personnel matter as authorized by NCGS 143-318.11, paragraph 8, 3, 4, and 6. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session and invite the county manager, the deputy county manager, and Scott Dornell.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor? That's five to zero. Let's take a short break before we go in. We had a motion to come out of closed session by Wayne Abley. No action was taken. We will stand in recess till May 27, 2014, at 3 o'clock p.m.